I need to read this notice of electronic meeting access to ensure government operations continue to function openly and transparently during the COVID-19 emergency while taking measures to protect the health and safety of citizens and government officials. Governor Bill Lee issued Executive Order Number 16 on March the 20th of this year, allowing government bodies to conduct essential business by electronic means. Electronic meeting access and information is also available online at thecityoflouden TN.org for your review. Also, we appreciate Chip and what he does for Redskin Radio and streaming our meetings. He does ask that everyone turn on their microphones and make sure that they speak into the microphone so that you can be, your audio can be heard and listened to accordingly. So if you could do that, we'd appreciate that. Thank you all for coming tonight. We have guests of honor tonight. We have two. Pastor Carl Jenkins from Loudoun Free Will Baptist Church is going to lead our invocation. And after that, kind of a regular around here, Eddie McAllister from the United States, a veteran of the United States Army, is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So thank you, gentlemen, for being here. So, Mr. Jenkins, we're going to ask you to lead us. Everyone stand, and then after that, we'll lead the pledge.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We ask you to be with all the representatives here tonight from Loudoun, that you be with them and have everybody here be in right mind with each other. And Lord, we just thank you for everything you do in this meeting, for our city and our county, and for everyone in this room. And as we pray in the Son's holy name, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you.
Pledge. Pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that and for your service to our country and our community. I'll ask for a roll call of attendance.
Mayor Perez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Brewster?
Here.
Councilmember James?
Here.
Attorney Bryan? Me, Chris, we're calling roll call.
Okay, yeah, I'm under your meeting.
Okay. Sound check is good. Okay. All right. I'd like to introduce first, I want to read a mayor's welcome here. We thank everybody for coming. Glad you could come out to be with us tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend a city council meeting and see how their government is doing business. We appreciate you taking time out of your personal schedule to be here tonight. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you don't have one, they're on the back table back there. Please help yourself to those. In order to conduct efficient business-like meetings, we've adopted specific rules to follow. These rules will help keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens' Input, where anyone who has signed in, or we'll also allow those, if someone online wants to comment, we can do that as well. We do ask that you wait until you've been recognized before you speak. When you get recognized, please approach the podium, address the council with three simple rules to follow. Please state your name for the records. Please address all your questions to the chairman, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once that portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of our agenda. You're welcome to stay and observe the meeting. Be advised that public comments will be limited. Well, I said everyone remember, we're doing the people's business here tonight. It's a very important meeting for all of us, responsibility. You can help us do this business by observing these rules. Again, we're glad that you've attended our meeting tonight. As far as the sign-in sheet, we have one, and that would be Rodney Grugan, the President of the Chamber of Commerce. Rodney, please approach the podium and address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Rodney Grugan. I am President of the Loudoun County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to say a couple of words on affordable housing in Loudoun County. I'd like to take this opportunity to express to you the position of the Loudoun County Chamber of Commerce on the connection between increased economic development and affordable housing in Loudoun County. The Chamber's mission is to assist in the development of a favorable business climate, provide leadership to improve economic growth, and to aid in the improvement of the quality of life of Loudoun County. There are several aspects to that mission, all of which are deeply interconnected. In order for both the City of Loudoun and Loudoun County to continue to grow economically and increase their tax base, new residents and new businesses and industry must be added to the city and county population. Businesses will not come unless they see a demand for their goods and services. That demand is created by consumers who live and work in the City of Loudoun and Loudoun County. In order to live here, there has to be housing. In order to work here, there has to be jobs. To be clear, businesses will not come if there's not an educated available workforce sufficient to fill their needs. But to be part of that workforce, individuals and families must be able to secure housing that they can afford. So as you can see, we have a complete circle. Economic growth will not take place without three key ingredients: demand from the consumer, employment opportunities for an educated workforce, and a place for that workforce to affordably live. What comes first? A new business will not consider coming to the City of Loudoun or Loudoun County without there being a sufficient workforce. However, they will come if they see that there's a plan in place to actively recruit that workforce. That plan starts by creating affordable housing and by ensuring that we have great educational opportunities for not only the current workers, but for their children as well. Loudoun County Chamber of Commerce has supported and will always support initiatives that will be beneficial to our membership and to the citizens of Loudoun County. That includes supporting job growth, the development of affordable housing, and the continued effort to provide excellent educational opportunities for everyone. You had before you at the last council meeting an opportunity to begin addressing the lack of affordable housing in the City of Loudoun and Loudoun County. It was and is your responsibility to discuss the merits of this proposed development. It was and is your responsibility to decide what is best for the City of Loudoun as a whole. You were elected to be the voice of all the citizens, and also to make decisions on what is best for the majority of those citizens. That can only be accomplished by objectively evaluating the merits of every single project that comes before you, discuss, debate, and then I challenge you to accomplish the job you were elected to do: represent all the citizens of the City of Loudoun in an educated, non-biased manner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Rodney, and thank the Chamber for their support and for some of the directors being, the board of directors members being here tonight, and I appreciate that. Nicole, is there anyone online that would like to address the council? If you can unmute those, and we'll ask if there's anyone virtually that's hooked up electronically, would they like to address council?
There used to be one button to get this. Now I have to. Does anyone on Zoom want to address council? It's not getting.
Okay. All right. Do you need to get that microphone back that's at the podium?
It's saved and loaded.
Okay. All right. So you don't need it. Okay. Next item is, everyone received a copy of the agenda. I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make the motion.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and second to adopt the agenda. Has mailed out. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, likewise. Motion carries. So adoption, the agenda is adopted. So we got those, I got those a little out of order, but we accomplished that. Rodney was the only one to speak. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I want to make one correction to the minutes, and that was a statement that's in the minutes that I declared the following ordinance failed for lack of a second. The proper verbiage there should be tabled for lack of a second. So we need to make that correction in the minutes. Take out the word failed, and it should say tabled for lack of a second.
If you do that, is that going to make it this the second reading on it?
No. No. No, it's still tabled. It's just tabled, so. Okay, I'll ask with those, with that amendment being made, I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember James, have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise?
Approve.
Approval of the minutes passed. Next item on the agenda is fuel bids. So this is the low bid for the purchase of fuel on May 20th was received from Petroleum Traders Corporation for the projected amount of $8,719.20. That converts to unleaded gasoline is $1.15, and low sulfur undyed diesel, $1.01. Have a motion. We approve the fuel bid?
I'll make a motion. We approve the bid.
Have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and second? Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say likewise. Motion carries. Next item, ordinance on first reading. This has been discussed quite a bit. Been in touch with the developer and the property owner. They would like for us to, they requested that we continue tabling this till July. Does anyone have an issue with that on council? It's already tabled, we just push it to July?
They want it tabled to July, not June?
Well, to June. I'm sorry. To June. I'm sorry. Thanks for that. Yeah, to June. Just one month for first reading, so it would come up for first reading in the month of June.
Can we still have some discussion on it tonight? Because according to newspaper and everybody, we wouldn't voice our opinion on it. It's on the agenda. Let's go ahead and make.
Sure. I have no problem with that.
Because there's some issues.
We just won't vote on it. That's okay. Okay. So I'll open the floor for discussion on this item.
Maybe so as not to confuse it with the first reading, someone make a motion to table. Second, then you can discuss that motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion to table it till June?
Make a motion to table it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Ross. Okay. Discussion, one thing, this is separate than the Queen of Road development that's been talked about. This is a separate item. It's, they've kind of got linked together sometime in discussion, but I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilman Brewster, you want to start?
Yeah. Up until today, I met with Brian Pettit. I had no clue on what it was going to look like out there, how the houses was laid out. I don't know who's to blame at that. All it was brought to us for was for a vote. We didn't know what we was voting on. However, like I went to the Planning Commission time and time again, my issue is the traffic within, and before I will make my final vote on this, either Loudoun City or the developer can pay a traffic engineer out in Oxford, there's all kinds of them, just to do an assessment, do an impact study, because there's so many entrances in that area to Highway 72, it's going to be a problem. So either we pay for a study, or we get the developer to pay for a study, and a traffic study like that's about $7,000. So in order for us to jump ahead on it, why can't we go ahead tonight and vote on ordering a traffic impact study? We need the houses, but we also need to be cautious on people getting killed out on 72 trying to pull out.
Okay. Any other discussion? I mean, I think that's, traffic's going to be a valid point.
Well, you know, it's been a point. I've been saying it for over a year now when this started. So if any question about how I stand on it, yes, I want the housing, but I want us to be cautious too, because I do not own another 321. And now's the time to do it. Don't wait for it to happen, then do something about it.
I spoke with Mr. Pettit this past week as well concerning my questions that I had regarding it, because I had heard 200 homes in this little section, and then I heard 70. But 200 is what originally I heard, and then the house prices alone were different from what I had originally heard. And he cleared up those questions for me. As far as, one of my major concerns was land value, property value of the surrounding homes. And, you know, I think that he did verify what the homes are going to be selling for will not bring down the value of the homes now. Could possibly bring up some of the value, because these houses are selling for a higher price with very little land, and their homes have more land. So may help them with that in the long run, but I do feel better about the questions that I had about it now. But I have requested that he come speak.
Yes.
At a council meeting.
Yes. I think he's planning on doing that in, at the next workshop, in the June workshop. That was another reason to table it to June.
Well, I'm in favor of the rezoning, because I know we need the houses. I do have a concern with the traffic, just like Brewster stated, but I don't know that the city needs to spend that kind of money for that at this point in time. If the developer wants to develop that, then I feel like that they might take that under their wings and have that done.
How would you feel about splitting it with them? Splitting call.
See, this gives us time to have that discussion with the developer, you know, because it would be July before it come up for a second reading anyway.
You know, I'm just trying to get a game plan. You know, I don't want to lose this development.
Well, we definitely don't need to lose this. We do not.
And every month we put it off, we'll put it into the winter months. Ronnie knows you can't.
Well, I asked him that, yeah. I asked him that today, is putting it off till June, is that going to, you know, delay the project as far as weather and things?
It would.
I mean, the only other action you could take tonight would be to, you know, we already voted to table it, but.
Let's vote to untable it, vote on it, and then.
You can vote it on first reading and.
And then we could, but we also need to make a decision on whether to do this traffic study or not.
One point, or merit, I don't think you've yet voted to table it. You're in the discussion phase of the motion and second, tabling.
That's true. Yeah, we haven't took a vote yet.
Yep.
You would have to, you'd have to agree to withdraw your motion and second if you want to take action on it. But I don't know that we can take action on approving money to spend.
I don't know what I'm saying, on the second reading, if we.
We could then.
If we haven't taken no action by the second reading, then I can't support it, because this is time enough, and now's the time to address the traffic.
Well, has anyone thought about, I know we, traffic without a doubt is going to be a problem. I mean, we essentially have one way in and one way out. I know you can say, well, you could go through the motel's parking lot, come down another exit and get out above it, or whatever have you, or maybe even come out and waffle. But that's private property, and they can stop you from doing it, but they don't want you to do it, period. It's just the way it is. It's not a public tariff area. It's not a shortcut to go anywhere. It's their property, and it's their refuse as they want to. Traffic is certainly a problem, but stop and think about one other thing that we have never experienced in this town, because we created R3, and we've never known what it would be like to have R3. And that is just what it is. It's high density. You're looking up on the hill at probably about 10 or 12 more homes you'd normally have if you done it by R1. Fire protection, I mean, are we geared up? Have we looked at a study, talked to some people, it's got R3? What they've done to be ready? What do we need to have? Because it's not like what we're accustomed to. If we have a house fire, we go to that house fire, and we put the house out. You have a house fire in R3, you'd be lucky to save that house and not lose two or three more. I mean, it'd be just very fortunate.
That was discussed in the Planning Commission.
I realize that, and I was told that the fire department was okay with it, but I have to question, does the fire department really know? Because they've never experienced anything like this, guys. They're not accustomed to it.
Not here, we haven't, but I'm sure in these other communities that do that.
Right, and they do, but have we reached out to them and said, hey, guys, what do you all do? What have you put in place to handle this? I mean, to wait for it to happen is not the time. To plan and foresee it and be ready for it is the time. That's what you need to do. And you're talking about a developer. He's in this to make money, and unless he has to do, unless he has to spend the money he's going to make, that's the bottom line. And I don't blame him. That's the way, that's the way life is. But we're talking about an expensive traffic city that we don't need unless we have this development. If we have this development, it's a result of us agreeing with him and letting him do it. Why would he not? There's some stipulations, and Jeff and I have talked about it. It's a give and take world out there. And I mean, you know, it's just a two-way street. You're not going to go one way all the time. You're not going to do that. And I just, I feel like that some of the things, some of the issues we're talking about needs to be addressed with the developer and the builder to make them understand where we are. It's not so much, if to pay, and I'm like Tim, if they will meet with the people and can convince the people of what they need to do, and the people are okay with it, I'm okay with it. We need it. We need it. I'll tell you, we need it, but not at everybody's expense.
Well, it gives a month to get those questions answered.
I agree, and I think that if they can't answer them in a month, they're probably not going to be able to answer them, or for whatever reason don't want to. And I've said all along, I mean, you know, and I think that actually most of the people that's involved in this, or the people that live out that way, just want some answers. They want something, want to hear some answers about things, and that's what they've not heard, you know?
He does have a meeting scheduled with them.
Yeah.
May 28th, so.
But I mean, I have, personally, I have no problem with it, none whatsoever. I mean, I can tell you that. But at the same time, I wouldn't wish ill will on my neighbor. I just wouldn't do that.
What action would council like to take? We had a motion and second to table it, and that's the discussion.
Did they just have a motion and second? They motioned and second, and they all went in favor of having it tabled.
Oh, they did? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we'd have to, we voted to leave, to table it. That's the direction we want to continue with?
What, do we want to vote on it and give them 30 days to get all this? Give them till the second reading?
What you guys want to do, I'm okay with. I mean, whatever Jeff feels is the right thing to do, that's what we'll do.
Well, right now, it's tabled till June.
Well, then why don't we just leave it that way?
That's fine. We can leave it that way.
Just leave it.
That's my recommendation.
Because the ball's in there, or not mine.
Okay. It'll be on the June workshop.
Where are we at on the traffic study? It's just a traffic impact study. They'll come in and do a study and tell us what we need to do. We've got seven or eight egresses and regresses right there within 200 yards.
I think that comes up at the June workshop, and then we have till July, the second reading to.
Is the Planning Commission, have you all thought about the traffic impact when you?
It was talked about at the very first meeting, doing an R3.
Was it not?
And so that's been talked about as far as the traffic study, no.
Can we act on that tonight? Put it in motion?
No. We've already adopted the agenda, and that's not, that's not on there. So I think it'd be well advised to bring that up in the June workshop and vote on it in the June meeting if that's.
I think it'd be good too, if Brian Pettit can be president at that June workshop, we can talk to him about.
He's planning on being here for that. Yeah.
About what he would be willing to, as a developer.
But while we're on this discussion, I do have a question for Rodney with the Chamber. What has the Chamber done? Is the Chamber doing anything? We've got 13,000 cars a day getting off our exit.
Okay.
We need 20,000 cars or better in order to start getting Ruby Tuesdays, Chili's. What is the Chamber doing? And I'm throwing the ball on you, because the advertisement on the interstate, isn't that your department to get the cars off the interstate for us?
Our department is to support the members of the Chamber. Okay. Now, if the members of the Chamber tell us that they want some type of advertisement off the interstate, then we'll work with them to do that. But per se, no, that is not part of our mission to do that. You know, we're a member-driven organization, and we work for what our members need.
Well, like Lenoir City has, and I'll go ahead and discuss with you, because we need the traffic. Lenoir City has Lake Way to the Smokies. What can the Chamber or your members do? This is the getaway to the dragon. This is a perfect exit for the dragon, and a dragon is a very popular spot. We have no advertisement out on interstate for things to do for a reason to get off.
We'd be glad to work with City of Loudoun on any type of program campaign like that you'd want to do. Be glad to work with Todd, glad to work with the mayor, be glad to work with you all.
I think Brian Pettit is really working hard for us right now, and he has some great ideas on what, how to get the traffic off. I think he worked with Lenoir City to get theirs going, so anything we can do to start getting cars off the interstate, please help us.
We'd be glad to start working with you all then.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item for first reading on ordinance is City of Loudoun adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Manager Ross?
Yes, the budget ordinance is prepared. It is drafted, is available for your review. This is just a first reading. As discussed in our workshop, this is a static budget for members of the audience and those watching from home. It's same headcount and same payroll as last year. There are, however, differences besides that, one being the additional funding to the healthcare fund. Another is a recommendation for financing of a paving project in Loudoun. And we discussed that at the workshop, and we're happy to go into that discussion here. Have more of a discussion on that this evening, or anything else that's on your mind. This is a first reading, and it's subject to change between now and its second reading.
Okay. To have a motion to approve and adopt the annual budget for the fiscal year.
I got a question for Todd. Does the budget reflect anything about the fire department's income enhancement that would reflect toward the police department's income?
No, sir, it does not. We have discussed that earlier, and the budget as it's currently drafted does not. For those in the audience, this discussion centered around the difference in pay, pay differential between firefighters and police officers. It's approximately 15% if you're just counting dollars between what the, say, for example, an entry-level firefighter would make versus entry-level police officers, about 15% with police officers being higher than firefighters. Councilmember Dixon and Councilmember James have both approached me on separate occasions about working to address that differential in the future. If now is the time to do that, I can, I can look towards editing this budget to address that, and I'm thinking out loud, is perhaps an incremental change, maybe address 5% of the differential, and maybe phase it in over three years. That's something I can, I can go and bring those numbers back to you with some specificity on June 8th.
And that wouldn't affect the first reading tonight? We could go ahead and prove it on first reading. He could have those numbers for the next meeting before second reading. If that's okay.
You're saying 5%, but that leaves a lot of room for the next couple of years to be able to, have to come up with that kind of revenue.
It's, I don't have the exact number since it was last researched. I know it's in excess of six figures, but we'll look at both.
Okay.
We'll look at both. You'll see this, you'll see the sum total of the differential as we calculate it, and then a recommendation on incremental change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is everybody clear on the question that was asked? Okay. To have a motion to approve the ordinance for adopting the annual budget on first reading.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Thank you for having us. Okay, thank you. Have a second.
Second motion.
Thank you, Councilman James. That's for a roll call vote, please.
We guess.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, okay. I'm sorry.
The, the one big thing is, is the, the 50,000 in here for the police department for their computers for their car.
It is.
That's half.
The, um, the cost of putting computers in the patrol cars for the, for the printing of tickets and the, um, uploading and downloading, uh, uh, of, of information relevant to, uh, police work is, is $75,000 to outfit all the cars. In our budget talks this year and our static budget and with a, an eye towards conservatism, uh, Chief Webb and I, uh, talked about doing half the patrol cars this year and half next year. It's the, it's the $37,000 figure.
One question I had on the money on it. Uh, it was last year, year before last. We agreed to hire an additional patrolman. Does everybody remember that? We had one patrolman got sick. We didn't know if he'd come back. We went in and allocated another patrolman. When we did this, we talked to Bear, I won't be sure or not. If we did this, this was going to cut down on his overtime and part-time. When it, it's still $140,000 we're going to be paying for overtime and part-time. If we're going to cut back on that, can we not take the money that was allocated for that part-time and overtime that we're going to save by having this new officer? Are we still going to allocate $140,000 even with an extra officer?
I'll get with Chief Webb, uh, between now and the second reading on his part-time line item and see what the, what consequences, if any, would come from that. And report back to this council.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions?
I had a question on the large purchases on our. Is there, because our, we don't know what, what this is going to be. I think business has picked up. I think the city is going to be fine on our tax dollars, but it, it, it's slow. We don't, I don't think we know the full effects of that yet. Am I correct? Yeah, yeah. If the budget gets approved until we know the, the full effect of this, until we get back to a more normal, secure state, could we hold off on those big purchases?
Well, those big purchases will come, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Ross, they still got to come up, be approved by us. Just because they're in the budget, they still have to be approved before we spend the money.
Okay.
Not everything's allocated to that department.
Well, um, let's just take them in order. You know, Queen, Queen Road would be, uh, a bid contract, uh, that would come back to you all. The traffic signal station probably, there's no cost to you there. What, um, yeah, let's get specific.
Specifically what I'm talking about is.
Yeah, let's get into what's.
With the fire truck. Because right now, the way we've got it set up, we're going to be doing payments on it. But if we get through this and we realize we didn't do so bad on taxes, you know, it's what we thought we were going to, we could save money by purchasing it straight out possibly and not doing a lease on it. Because originally, we were going to purchase it straight out and save money. So right now, how we've got it set up is to do a lease on it, which is going to, in the long run, cost us money.
I think it's $57,000 in interest.
Yeah. But if we can wait, I mean, we may do. I don't think we're going to end up as bad as what a lot of other cities and counties are going to, going to do with this. Because I think Loudoun pretty much, we, I think we did a great job holding our own through all this. But we don't, we won't know that till we see the numbers.
We can, we can simply defer that procurement until such time as we feel better about it.
I just don't want to short ourselves.
Two approaches here. You can leave it as is, and, and we just simply monitor and watch and not procure until such time as we're comfortable. And we'll report back to this body, um, when we recommend that time to be. Or you can remove, remove it from the budget, and then we come back to you, uh, for a budget amendment. It's six, one, why half, half dozen the other.
Right.
Over a certain dollar, like $10,000 has to come up before us anyway, correct? I mean, just because there's $25,000 leaf machine in there, they still got to come.
Right.
For approval from us.
That truck lease would come before you for approval.
So I mean, we could.
Okay.
Even though it's in the budget, we can deal with it separately when it comes up at that time. So.
That was my.
Okay.
Final question.
A contract that, a procurement that can't be accomplished within a year, which we, as, as a rule of thumb, bring to you for your approval.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Business?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Deason?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is setting the tax rate for tax year 2020. Manager Ross?
Yes, and keeping with our static budget, um, theme, uh, we are recommending the same property tax rate, uh, this next fiscal year as, as this past year.
Okay. Ask for a motion to approve this on first reading.
I'm making motion. We approve the tax rate.
Okay, have a second?
I'll say a second motion.
Okay, have a motion and second. Any discussion? Okay, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Deason?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Business?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Okay, next item is amending the Loudoun Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 1, regarding refuse and trash disposal.
Yes, this is, these are recommended changes in policy, uh, from our Public Works Department and our Public Works Director, Ellis Scruggs. Um, we discussed these at length in the, in the workshop. Uh, they all concern, uh, refuse and trash disposal. Um, the, the requirement of bags or the requirement that, uh, that rubbish not be left by contractors, that such rubbish be produced by the homeowner, rather than a, a private or a commercial contractor.
All the changes were italicized. You could, you could make note of all the changes that was listed there, recommended. So I'll ask for a motion to amend the municipal code on first reading.
I'll make a motion to amend the code.
Okay, thank you, Councilman James. Have a second.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Brewster. Have a second. Now, any discussion about any specific item on there? Any clarification needed with what was submitted?
Who is going to be responsible? We require it to be put in bags. You can set it on the curb. Who is going to be responsible when the sanitation department picks it up and they bought cheap bags and there's trash everywhere? Are we going to require our guys to clean that up? Because we're defeating the purpose of requiring it put in bags, but we, we have to draw a fine line somewhere.
Well, my best recollection of this same discussion that took place during the workshop is that we communicate to the homeowner the, the deficiency in, in what they're using and, um, and encourage betterment. And the, the household's purchase of, of better quality bags.
Are we going to notify everybody by putting a notice in their utility bill? How are we going to get the word out?
Well, this will be placed on our website, and, um, those, the, the problem areas are well-known. And, and it's going to be communicated with flyers and, uh, direct communication from the Public Works Department.
How's it handled now?
We pick it up, I believe.
You can, you can summarize our policy now as whatever it takes. If somebody has refuse or, uh, or rubbish, we get it.
The way, the way our policy currently states is we pick up the garbage. If we pick up the bag and it breaks, we pick it up. If animals or other get into those bags before we get there, we typically do not pick up that mess. But if it breaks because we were handling it, we do clean it up.
That clears it up then. I think that's what he said at the workshop as well.
Now again, if it's a recurring problem with those bags, then we try to communicate to the homeowner. If that's a problem, we see it continually go happening.
Thank you, Director Scruggs. Any other questions or comments before we ask for a vote?
Yeah, one more. Hypothetically, we got a homeowner that's very rebellious, says, I don't care. I'll let it pile up if the bags bust. How long are we going to let this?
I've been there, been there, done that, sir. I've seen it in my 10 years. You end up in a standoff situation, and it becomes a battle of culture. Are you going to side with the homeowner? Or are you going to side with your employees and their policy of not picking up certain items and trash?
Yeah, but how long are we going to let it go?
It goes a long time. I've, I've seen it go, I've seen it go six weeks, and, um, it becomes, it becomes a standoff. It's not free. And now, it happened, these instances are rare, but they end up getting a lot of attention and it causes a lot of turmoil. Depends on the stubbornness of the individuals involved.
Okay, no other discussion. I'll ask, um, for a roll call vote.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Business?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Next is resolution acknowledging the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System rate effective July 1st, 2020.
Yes, um, just for the members of the audience and those listening at home, uh, this organization participates in Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, or TCRS. And the state body communicates to us on an annual basis what we as employers are to contribute to that plan, uh, on behalf of our employees. It's a, it's a percentage of their, of their income. We received a, a notice in early March, this is before COVID, uh, that, or at least before it got real here in, in our locale, uh, that recommended a contribution level of 4.23% for the city. And it's, it's higher than that for public safety, uh, 7.73. Last year, we contributed 9.78 for the city and 13.28 for public safety. And just living in this new world and knowing what we know about the markets and investments, we know that, that funds like this, uh, aren't doing well now and, and may not be doing well, uh, in the foreseeable future. So staff is recommending that we hold the contribution rate constant from last year, uh, rather than decreasing according to this now-dated recommendation.
I just think that's smart planning, just being ahead of the game here. Leaving the rate as it is. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to, to acknowledge the TCRS effective rate July 1st, 2020.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Business. Have a second. And thanks, Mr. Brewster. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Next is a resolution establishing a benefit advisory committee. This is, um, just to approve the resolution to establish this committee. So, Manager Ross, if you want to.
Yeah, clue in your pocket is a, is a resolution establishing a benefit advisory committee. Um, we never had one before, um, but we've had, um, two years of disagreement over, over how to move forward, um, with our benefit plan, and we thought it might be helpful, uh, to form, uh, a joint advisory committee of employees and citizens, uh, to number one, just learn who we are and what we do from a historical perspective with our benefits. And, uh, then also understand, uh, the current market and how our long-term plan interacts with that current market. And last but not least, have an actuary, um, do some projections, uh, of our current plan and what that cost would be in the future. And so, uh, I think, uh, any advisory committee would benefit from that information and be able to make a recommendation, uh, to the council on pathways forward.
I think that's the key. It's advisory committee. They're making recommendations. The voting approval would be with this, with this, uh, body here on any of those recommendations. So to have a resolution to establish this benefit advisory committee.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Have a second. A second just brings it up to discussion. It doesn't mean you have to vote in favor of it.
I'll second the motion, but I can assure you I'll vote in favor.
Sure, okay. That's, that's all. So we have a motion and a second. Now we can open it up for discussion. And as far as individual members, we're going to deal with those under appointments. Which is the next item on the agenda. This, this resolution here just establishes this committee. We'll vote on the members under the appointments.
I spoke with Mr. Ross before the meeting about some of my concerns with it, and, um, one of my concerns was, is this going to just hold us up and take longer, uh, to get the ball rolling? Because I think that's been our shortfall in, in previous years is it just seems like it's last minute, and, and then we're forced to vote on it. So, um, he has assured me that they'll have their recommendation to us by August, correct? By the end of August.
Well, it's a matter of, it's, it's convening the body and we've all seen it on television, folks. It's, you know, it's like the, akin to a congressional hearing, we have testimony, testimony from experts. We'd have to bring in people from the, from the insurance industry, um, advisors and, and providers. And then, uh, from the accounting side, the, the actuary, um, accountants to, to, to project a cost out for, for the, the chosen level of service. So I think that can be accomplished in two months.
I mean, they can start meeting right away as soon as we establish this committee and this resolution. They can start meeting.
June and July. Yeah, we just need to get the group together, um, determine, uh, how often we can meet. And, um, and then get in, again, get in those, those experts to provide, provide the information.
I agree. I think timing's been an, an issue, and I think this gets us started sooner.
That's, you know, the one thing I, I would like to see that added into there, because this advisory board is going to not go away after this year.
No, I don't think so either.
We would be voting on something that would be continuous. I'd like to see that in there, that, you know, the the recommended plan from the advisory committee will be presented to the council by August of each year. If there's a holdup, that can be addressed that year if something, you know, something's went. Hey, Mark?
I wouldn't advise attaching, uh, an annual date to it yet because the, the, the ebb and flow of the, of the fiscal cycle, you know, along with, um, when, uh, when renewal takes place, it's just August might be doable, but let's just not assign that to it just yet. And, and I'm, I'm 100% in favor of having it better aligned with our fiscal budget and maybe having a recommendation, you know, along the lines of May, or where, where we are right now.
So it could be factored into the budget?
At this time of the year, yes. Yeah. So, um, we'll look into that too. In, in terms of the the cadence of, of, of renewal and, and the benefit cycle, what are, what are, what are the best dates that would provide this council with the best outcomes going forward?
Okay.
And our experts can tell us that, you know. One of our rules is don't do hard things alone.
Okay, any other discussion about the benefit advisory committee establishing it?
Is this just to establish it?
Yes, yes.
This is not voting on the members yet?
We'll, we'll cover those under appointments, which is the next item.
Okay.
All this is resolution just to establish this committee. Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed likewise? Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointments. I have a couple of appointments I need to make. I need to appoint Michael Grady to the recreational advisory committee. He will be replacing Buzz Hendrix. So talk to Director Harold about that. He's okay with that appointment. These do not take any kind of, uh, action by council. And the next appointment. And the next appointment is, I need to appoint Teresa Webb to serve as the mayor's appointment on the planning commission, which has been vacated by Jim Greenway. So Teresa Webb will fill that, which is the mayor's seat on that planning commission. She will fill that role as my advocate on that committee. The next appointment is the benefit advisory committee. You see the names listed there. Tim Dixon, Gene Farmer, Bill James, James Webb, Clay Townsend, Aubrey Cagle, John Franklin, and Jim Thomason. The goal was to get across a section of people, utility workers, city workers, taxpayers, ratepayers. Some of these volunteer to serve, and some, just based on their experience, have been asked to serve. So Manager Ross, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, everyone on the list is a volunteer, save Jim Thomason. I did reach out to him personally. Jim Thomason is a certified public accountant who lives here in Loudoun, and on an annual basis presents to all of our civic clubs and provides us updates on the tax code. He's just a, he impressed me in particular, and I thought he would bring some weight to this committee.
Okay. And I think Bill James is at the request of Councilmember Evans. I think you asked for him to be placed on there, which is a good appointment.
Don't tell him.
Oh, don't tell him, yeah. And then we, you know, we got the vice mayor, we got a director from the Loudoun Utility Board on there, Chief Webb, Clay Townsend from the utilities, Aubrey Cagle from the utilities, who also came from another district, which would have some experience there as well, John Franklin, Jim Thomason.
I have a question. We've got Jessica Green, Bart Watson, and Grayling Littleton, who are our local insurance agents. Why is none of those not on this board?
Bart's on our utility board. Grayling is a broker that provides our insurance.
If somebody wants to speak to Jessica Green and ask her if she'd like to serve, I mean...
Again, everyone on the list raised their hand and volunteered.
Right, yeah. With the exception of Jim Thomason, like I said, you contacted him, the rest?
The three you mentioned did not volunteer.
Right.
Did we reach out to an agent to ask them? I mean, if you're going to get insurance advice and give insurance advice, an agent would be the way to go, I would think.
Mr. Watson and Mr. Littleton have been apart, not apart, but in the room in this multi-year conversation, and chose not to weigh in on this committee. It was their personal choice. We can solicit them.
Well, in the same way with Director Farmer, he's got a lot of experience in cooperation and dealing with at a major level.
This is a committee that's, you know, attempting to advise Director Watson, and Grayling Littleton is the current insurance broker for the city. He may or may not, and Attorney Frye is welcome to weigh in, view this as a conflict of interest.
And keep in mind, these are advisory roles. They're making recommendations to us. They have, you know, no really individual power of their own.
I want to take a moment to address something. I have a problem with one, supposedly a volunteer, Mr. John Franklin. I don't care how much he volunteered, he didn't impress me at all. I still have a copy of what he emailed me back some months ago involving you. What's to say if somebody don't do what he wants to do, and he goes on another email threatening people? I mean, that man didn't even know who I was. He never saw me before. He couldn't identify me in a crowd if I was there. But he sent, somehow he got my email address and sent me an email with my head on a platter telling me what he was going to do to me. The only thing I can tell John Franklin is, thank God, that it's 20 years later and Johnny James wasn't 20 years younger, because he wouldn't have lived through the night. I'd have beat him to death, and I'll tell you that right now. But I learned to mellow out. And if you think I want him to serve on it, absolutely not. If you think I'll vote for it, absolutely not. But now, if you want to, if you want him to serve on it, you do whatever you want to do, okay? But I spoke my piece, because I still got the email, and I'll keep it till the day I leave this world.
Well, I'll just go to the resolution approved by the council, unanimous vote. The city manager may make recommendations of persons to serve on the committee, but the council and the board, in reference to the utility board, make the final determination of who sits on the committee.
Right, it's our call, it's not ties. So if we want him off there, we take him off.
Are you going to vote him individually?
We can, if that's what y'all want to do.
I think personally, that's the only, and I would not have a problem with him if he hadn't done what he had done. And he made it personal. And if he thinks, "I'll just walk away," after he throws, hits me in the back with a rock, ain't going to happen. I'll get even, I won't get mad.
I'll ask for, we can do them individually, if we want to do that.
Okay, are you going to take recommendations from the floor?
To replace him?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think that person, whoever the recommendation, would need to be approached and asked, you know, if they would be able to serve.
I don't think that any of us should say, "Well, Joe Blow's going to serve." That's not what they want to hear. They want to be asked.
Yeah, they need to be asked first.
And they don't want to.
I just think it'd be a good idea to ask. I mean, we've got three good agents here in Loudoun, why not get one of them?
You want to talk to one of them?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, all right. Once you do that, and then you can...
I'll get back.
We can always add to the committee. I'll just ask for a consent vote on Tim Dixon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Gene Farmer?
Aye.
Bill James?
Aye.
You better vote aye. James Webb?
Aye.
Clay Townsend?
Aye.
Aubrey Cagle?
Aye.
John Franklin?
No.
So that was three noes? Is that three noes? Four noes? Okay. I would vote aye, because he volunteered. I have no problem, so it's 4 to 1. So he comes off. Jim Thomason?
Aye.
Okay, so, and you're going to speak to Jessica Green? Okay.
Or Bart Watson.
Okay, you can speak, whatever, that you can bring a recommendation back.
And we reached out to any of the bankers like in town, that, anybody that works in the bank or associated with the bank, vice presidents, presidents, things of that nature. We reached out to anybody.
No, other than the two we mentioned, Bill James and Jim Thomason, everybody else was volunteer.
Well, Jim, I could say would be a shoe-in. I mean, because he does numbers, that's what he does. He knows how to make money, that's what he's supposed to do with money. I would think that a banker would be of advice if he didn't know how, if we could get somebody to talk him into doing it. Now, I don't know...
Is there someone you'd like to...
I wouldn't recommend anybody to go, because I think any banker should be qualified if they would do it.
Do you have one you'd like to approach?
Well, I can approach them, I don't know if they'll do it. I can tell you that, but I mean, they may.
You could bring them, we can always add to this committee.
Well, I'll go to them and ask them, that's all I'll do. And then if they say yes, I'll tell you the name, okay?
Okay, and one thing you can also take now to them is this resolution we just passed of what they're going to be being asked to do.
Job description.
Yeah, basically.
Well, I think it's definitely something we need, and looking at the situation we're in would warrant the fact that we should have done it sooner. I mean, that's just the model. You know, we would not be where we are if we hadn't.
Okay, so that committee is established with those members and with more to come, recommendations to follow. Okay, we'll go to department reports and start off the leadoff hitter, Police Chief Webb. He's got a special guest to announce and introduce. Chase, I think he wants you up here in the front.
We all know that the last few weeks, the last couple of months, have been some trying times and some difficult times for all of us, and it's just been things that we have not been accustomed to dealing with. And I've got Chase Lane here today. Got a little story with Chase. Chase was one of our volunteers. Volunteer program, one of the things we do is some of the young folks in the community think that they might want to seek a career in law enforcement. They work and they help us as volunteers. They get to ride in the cars, see what it's like to be a police officer. And then many times, like in Chase Lane's case, they decided they'd like to go to the police academy. So what happens is Chase takes the money out of his own pocket, and he pays his tuition to go to the police academy. And as the police chief, I write a letter of recommendation saying that I think this is a good candidate, because he's volunteered and he's been dependable in all the things that I feel like makes him a good candidate. Couple of things happened a little bit different because of the pandemic that came along, that we all know was COVID-19. Of course, the governor issues executive orders, and there's a lot of things that get closed down. Well, the state of Tennessee runs Cleveland State, and Cleveland State runs the police academy. So the police academy is 12 weeks long. Chase's class, first time in history with two weeks to go, the police academy got shut down for six weeks. So here's all these young men, I guess you have, what, 25 or 30, I guess, or so in the class, that are kind of in limbo, what are they going to do? And so whenever things got opened up at the end of the month, the academy got back, Chase got to go back and finish his two weeks. Now, here's the thing. When they have academy graduation, when we have a young person that goes through the academy, me and the sergeants, normally whoever else that wants to go, along with their family members, all go to Cleveland State and have a big ceremony, have a graduation. They get to walk across the stage and get their certificate. Councilmember Dixon has been there and has done that, because he has some with the police academy. And so, you know, it's a big time and a big celebration. Well, because of the circumstances, they couldn't have the graduation. So we wanted to have a little mixer, that's what I called it, for Chase at the police station, and so we were able to recognize him with some of his fellow police officers and his family members. So Chase is now a part-time police officer. He's going through what we call an FTO program, our Field Training Officer Program. We have some officers that are particularly trained to train the young folks when they get out of the academy. And so Chase is going through his FTO program. He's getting an experience of a lifetime tonight here at City Council meeting. He's never been to a City Council meeting before. So I'd just like for y'all to wish him luck, and he'll be here to serve us for many years, I hope.
Thank you, Chase. Welcome aboard.
Good job. Also, while we're talking about the pandemic, many of you have heard that there were 50-something employees at Monterey Mushroom that tested positive. Part of the responsibility, the Sheriff's Department with the Health Department was to go around and visit those homes and make notifications to put those folks in quarantine. What we found out was that there was an address where two of our police officers had answered two calls at an address here in the city of Loudoun, where one of those folks had tested positive. So as a precaution, I had two police officers and a volunteer that I put on quarantine. They tested a week ago today, and they tested negative. And one of the reasons that was so big is that meant that anybody that they had, because of the incubation period, you never know. And but what we did know was that since we had that mixer for Chase, and they were there, none of us had been contaminated, because they tested negative last Tuesday. So all three of them have gone back for their follow-up tests today. We think we're going to get the results back tomorrow. We're scheduled to put them all back to work on Friday. So I know that there has been some rumors in the community about the police department and the coronavirus. We've not had anybody infected at this time, don't expect it to be, just as a precaution, because there was a potential for exposure that we did that.
Thank you, Chief, for taking that step. Chase, thank you for your commitment and dedication to your career, hometown boy that, you know, wants to be a law enforcement officer here. I think it's a good mix.
Well, and, you know, because we're so small, we don't have a lot of turnover, a lot of these young men we lose to go to other agencies. And Chase tells me he's going to tough it out until he gets a job here. He's going to stay with us. So we'll see.
Thank you, Chase, and thank you, Chief. Anything else?
Yeah, one other thing, as you well know, Mayor, we got the permit to go on the attack of the turkey vultures again. And one thing that I will say is that when we first started that last week, we had sightings of a lot of turkey vultures, and so we hit them hard that first day, and since then, we're having trouble finding them. So we'll just keep that permit open. Folks, we start getting complaints, you call us and let us know what areas, because that's what happens a lot of times. We started out, they were actually down there attacking our black and whites parked at the PD, and that's why I contacted them there and said, "Hey, we need to get another permit." Well, so that's run them off from there, but they may end up in your neighborhood or your neighborhood somewhere, and so you folks call us and let us know if you see those turkey vultures gathering up, creating a problem.
If you ran vultures to my neighborhood, I'll call them.
Okay, we'll take care of that. And I just wanted to clarify one thing, Councilman Brewster. When we were talking earlier about the part-time and the overtime budget, I just want to clarify this. I think what you're talking about is we take some of that and put it down there in that capital projects to try to get all of the computers at one time. And that's not necessarily, actually, it's a good idea, but one thing I want to kind of let you know about that is ongoing now, what ends up happening, if I've got extra money, just like every department head here can tell you, we get extra money, we don't spend all the money in our budgets, it goes into the fund balance. You know, so you might have a little bit of money to do that traffic study you're talking about. But anyway, we work, it's kind of throughout the year to try to, if we need to pull a little money from one to the other and do that, Cole and I just talked about this the last few days, and so if we need to, she'd come back and ask you to make an adjustment to the budget throughout the year. But I think it's a good idea to leave that overtime and part-time in there, because we really don't know the kinds of things that we run into. For example, like this situation where I've just had two full-time police officers off for 14 days, you know, they were all getting backfilled, you know, with part-time people. And we never know when we may have some type of crisis that we need that, and it just kind of buys us time. So I just wanted to give you that to think about. I think it's a good idea what you're talking about, but we might wait till later on into the fiscal year if we make some transfer. Let me work with that $37,000 on these computers first, and then we'll kind of see where we're at.
You've got, I went through your budget line a lot. You're going to have quite a bit of money left over in some of your line items, and I think you can work it.
I just wanted to point that out to you. I appreciate you bringing that up. See if anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Chief, and again, thank you, Chase, for being here, your dedication. Chief Brewbaker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give an update. If y'all know, the building in Oak Street is all in the fire department now. I just wanted to let y'all know, we currently have about 50 open building permits going on right now in the city of Loudoun. Most of them are going to be your single-story, your residential units.
Okay.
500 permits.
Good. Thank you, guys, again, for manning the door and taking temperatures and things checks. Director Harold?
Yes, Chief, 17 minutes, so I'll try to, you know, sleep. And part of the turkey vultures, they have started killing off, and maybe geese survive and they're strong, and we're talking about 100 down there today, so if you can get part of them, then we're good.
I've checked on that. We can, you know, we can, that was discussed when I discussed it with them, but I don't know that we can exterminate them, but...
People seem to like the geese where they do the turkey vultures.
We can work on that.
Lots of people that walk the track.
Maybe they haven't been chased by them yet.
Bart, would you consider...
Just kind of giving you an update on what we have with the park system. We are, Ty and I meet at least once a week, and we talk about the, what we should be doing as far as opening up the assets and facilities. We met today, and we're talking about the swimming pool. It's probably going to be easier to stand here tonight and tell you what's not going to be open in the near future. And it's basically based on CDC, state of Tennessee, federal and state guidelines. And currently, basketball courts will not be open, soccer fields will not be open, and that's because of the close contact of competition when the people play together. Tennis courts will be open. We've had those closed and a key reserved just for folks that want to come by and play tennis. Why do we close the tennis courts? Because that's been a recommendation, is to have those open the whole time. What happens is, once you close the soccer fields, the kids that like to play soccer, they're very good kids, they're excellent kids, but they need a flat place to replace their soccer field. So the first place they go is a lighted tennis court, and they do a lot of damage to the fence and facility when they do that. So we just felt like it was best to go ahead and close the tennis courts, but as of this week, we will reopen the tennis courts. Restrooms, we're trying to keep at least one restroom in every park open. The new procedure for cleaning their bathrooms has really been time-consuming. It takes two guys, about two and a half hours a day, bleaching the bathrooms, and we only have five open of about 20 that are in the park system. So please, please contact Manager Ross, and we'll answer any questions that we have. We're here to provide these activities, folks. We don't want to close them. We're here to make sure that they are open. We want to see kids playing basketball. We want that pool open, but we also want to be safe. We want to do the right thing, so it's sad, it really is, to drive through and see these activities shut down. it really is, to drive through and see these activities shut down, and we're getting there, we're just, we're just slow. Oh, yeah, and last but not least, playgrounds, they probably will not be open all year, I think they'll remain closed all, all year.
So, you're going to make an announcement on the pool?
We will, we, we put some guidelines together, and hopefully in the next few days, restricted hours, less hours, and different cleaning procedures and things that we're going to do, so.
Capacity requirements or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Fourth of July, what's, what's your plan going in?
The thought right now is maybe just a fireworks show, allow people to come and remain in their car. Things are changing, maybe that'll change as well. One thing that has changed is Loudon High School, I spoke with Principal Scott McIntosh six weeks ago, I guess, about using the amphitheater for graduation. They came out, they visited, they fell in love with it, the plan is for Loudon High School to use that in August for the high school graduation. Also, there's a possibility of another high school that's going to use it as well, but we haven't got a confirmation on that one yet, but I think that would be good advertisement, good promotion for us. But as things change, again, that's from your, your recommendations on what we should do, I think we should, as, as it is now, just plan on the fireworks show, and no vendors or anything like that inside the park.
Yes, the blue tops, why is it closed?
We closed all the shelters because of congregating the folks of more than 10, they'll be, they'll be open this week.
That restriction's been up to 50 now, I guess.
That's true.
So, they can, they can be opened up.
And they'll be, with the understanding that we will not be making reservations, you'll be taking your own chance, so if you want to use that shelter for a family picnic, don't call Parks and Recs, take a chance on it being open, but, yes, that, that was the reason. All shelters should be open by the first of next week, except for Lions, Flip, and the problem remains closed, at least another two months.
With the trails and tracks and everything still remaining open?
Trails, tracks, everything's open, a lot of activity, a lot of passive players in parks, and people out, it's, it's really been kind of neat, a lot of handholding and families doing, I see you and Kelly walking all the time, it's good to see what's happening in the park system.
I think you've been doing the main handholding.
Thank you very much, yes, I married nine days today, we've made it nine days.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mark. Any other questions for Mark?
Did I see something about food trucks?
Food trucks, we'll start that in, in June.
June or July?
June.
June.
We hope to, yeah, we'll do the, probably one or two food trucks to begin. Food trucks will be on Highway 72 this year instead of Riverside, and we hope to start that in June, the state has, that has been one thing they have on the map now.
State has allowed food trucks, so, yeah. Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Director Brown, you have anything you can bring up? Nicole, anything?
I'm, thank you for your acceptance of the, of the first reading, and thank you for your comments and feedback, Mark Phillips. Yes, Ellis is on the line.
Okay.
I hope we get another microphone. Go ahead, Ellis.
I just think, thank the time to review that, those ordinance changes, I think that'd be very great for the public work department going forward, so just appreciate you guys' time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Reports, I know we gave a report at the workshop, maybe nothing might have changed since then, so we'll probably just take that off the workshop agenda and just do it on the meeting, has anything changed with solid waste?
Nothing. We still haven't had a meeting and haven't heard about June's, I suspect that we will probably meet in June, but I don't know that.
Okay, all right. Planning Commission has not met, so nothing's changed. Courthouse Square, Johnny, have y'all met, anything to report on from the Courthouse Square Grant Committee?
It's my understanding that we have approved of Dunbar School, is that not that right, correct, sir?
That, I've received that feedback on, on the budget and inside the budget, from Courthouse Square is a $25,000, an amount not to exceed $25,000 to pay for a roof for the Dunbar School.
Okay.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Councilman Brewster, from the Recreation Advisory Committee, you have anything you need to?
Nothing on that, but I do have a couple of questions.
Concerning that, or just the general? Okay, we'll cover those in the next, in the closing comment. Closing comments, I just want to give a, a shout out to a few people here, Charles Best, Public Works Department, this month celebrates 38 years of service, so, 1982, he was just recently out of high school when he started with the city of Loudon, so hadn't been out of high school too long, 38 years of service, Public Works Department. Ken Everett, with the Water Department, also 1982, this month, he celebrates 38 years. Then Brian Curtis with LUB Electric, 1994, he celebrates 26 years of service. I think that's, that's something to be celebrated, that, that length of term with any one group, so, I'm thankful for those guys and their commitment to, to their job and what they've invested here in our city and our utilities. So, Councilmember Vivins, well, you gave any closing comments? Okay. Vice Mayor Dixon?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember James, you have any closing comments?
Actually, I don't have a comment, but I do have a question. It was brought to my attention about the paving project on Highland Avenue, and I, like a lot of other people, assumed that Highland Avenue went down to the edge of Kingston, where Kingston Street terminates, that was Highland Avenue all the way up and down to Highway 11. But we noticed that the end of the project is at the water tower, that's where it's going to be terminated. I never knew, because I didn't know what the contract called for, I didn't know what the limits of it was, but is there, obviously, there's about, I think, four, five, six residents there on Highland Avenue, that you might have thought they were going to get a new paved street, and they're getting, they're not.
One of them's probably here tonight, Chip Lynn.
Yeah, I, I realize he is. And have we gave that any forethought, or could we give it some kind of forethought as to the possibility of, you know, making this thing happen down to where Highland Avenue, it actually goes to, I think, that McArthur Street or somewhere, that's where it ends at. And, and, and I, like I said, I never, until Mr. Lynn called me, I just assumed Highland Avenue was Highland Avenue, but I found out it wasn't Highland Avenue.
Well, the, and then, thank you for bringing up that question, that project, project predates me, it was in excess of three years when that project was put together and then applied for with TDOT, and, and, and I wasn't really involved in its design.
Well, is that something that, outside TDOT, outside this contract?
Yeah, I mean.
Could we look at the outside contractor to complete?
Our Public Works Department is well aware of the, of the scope of that work, and it is included in the paving plan, what is not, that, that section of road that you're concerned about, is included in the, in the budgeted paving plan.
Nicole, does Director Scruggs have a comment on that?
Yeah, what I did want to do is actually get a proposal from Harrison Construction on paving at least through Kingston, and see if we can include that in our current public works budget, as an option.
Be cheaper then to do it than any other time while they're doing it. So, did everybody understand what Ellis was saying?
We're, we're going to pay the contractor that's doing now the difference to going down to Kingston.
Correct. Yeah, and be, be mindful that that difference will be 100%, and going back to TDOT now for a change order would be problematic.
We're only talking three loads of asphalt.
Well, I think Director Scruggs said he'd try to accomplish it with his budget.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Director Scruggs?
Yes, with the current capital we have in our budget.
Okay.
You've got some leftover money, too.
Okay, anything else? Councilman James?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Brewster?
That was Highland Avenue, too. Planning Commission, we voted just now, first reading, we're only going to give them $25,000, we got notice, all of us did, that it couldn't be $50,000 or up to $85,000. At some point, let's put it on the next workshop, we got to either hire our own planner, or start to keep depending on the county, and I'm 100%, I talked about it a year ago, quit paying somebody else to do our planning, let's do our own planning.
I don't necessarily disagree with you philosophically, on backtrack, I, I agree with you, but let's, I think it'd be proper to wait for that official communication to come from the county before we speculate as to what might happen.
It's already came, well, we got emails, but.
Manager Ross and I have discussed it, and I agree with him, I think we're waiting on, right now, Mayor Bradshaw has signed it.
But he's, he's sent a retract.
Yeah, we haven't got that retraction yet.
Mayor Bradshaw sent an email that said that it is his prediction that they'd be asking us for more money, they'd be the county commission, he estimates it somewhere between $25,000 and additional dollars, bring it to $50,000, all the way up to a total of $85,000, it's a significant increase over what we paid in years past.
And this can, then discontinue it in 2021, 2022.
Now, this is the last year they're going to do.
So, this is something, I mean, Manager Ross and I have talked about, I think we're waiting on the county to serve official notice to us that there will be an increase.
The county is the baseline of service that the state requires, if you want something more, if you want to be a, to be a city, to offer a higher, higher level of service, you shouldn't look to the county necessarily always.
I'm on board with us starting to look at having our own planning commission, should happen to go through the county, I've talked to Di about it, and I, I think, and, you know, we, we've talked about that before, and I'm on board with that.
It would expedite growth.
It would, it would, it would, yeah.
I think the problems you're encountering now on Highway 72, and there, I think there's a disconnect between politically, emotionally, intellectually, what goes on in that planning department versus what we want here, there's, there's a wide gap there.
I don't understand what you mean, what you're saying.
Another office is planning our future.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's where he agrees with you, that we need to bring it in-house.
Same thing, same thing, different wording.
I think everybody agrees that it would be, I don't like depending on the county for that service either.
If we get that redaction before the next workshop, I'm guessing it would be on the workshop anyways, correct? The redaction of that.
Absolutely, yeah, well, the, as soon as we get some sort of a official word, and my understanding is it comes from the Budget Committee and then ultimately to the full County Commission, and then we would know, understand what we're looking at.
I think they're voting on it on June 1st, so, County Commission, so.
Yeah, he says in his email, he prematurely signed that $25,000.
Yeah, that's, that's why I brought the $25,000, a $25,000 contract for planning services to use, because it was, it was sent to me from the county.
Yeah.
So, are we going, we, we very voted on the 25, are we going to come back and make an amendment if we have to? How are we going to do that? Where are we going to get the money?
I don't think you need to spend any additional money, I think you can do it for, in the static budget that you currently got allocated, and I'll speak more to that at the workshop.
You're talking, doing it in-house, good idea.
There's a, there'll be a plan put together, so, anything else?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion, or, Councilman, Manager Ross, do you have anything else that we need to bring up?
No, I think it's a productive meeting, it's, it's budget season, there's a lot on your plate, I thank you for your time and for your attention and your feedback, we'll get back to you with the information that you've requested.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
I need public hearings, please.
Okay, one or two, what, what do we?
Total of three.
Three, okay. Let's do 615, 620, 625.
And again, we'll be happy.
Yes, okay, thanks for that reminder. Do I have a motion we adjourn?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Save the motion.
Okay, motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you.
This is Chip Lynn, City of Loudon Mayor Jeff Harris joins us now, and Jeff, in Tuesday night's city council meeting, we had a lot of discussion.
We sure did, Chip, it's a very productive meeting, council really went to work and got a lot of things accomplished tonight, we approved on first reading our, our budget, which includes a few, a few changes, mostly a static budget, there were some additions to the medical fund, some capital equipment in there, some computers, some money for a fire truck, different things like that, so we're, we're pleased with the budget, we approved it on first reading, we talked about some paving up on Highland Avenue, that's still on track to be finished in the month of June, so that was good, that, that should be complete very soon. We also had the privilege of welcoming a new part-time police officer here tonight, Chase Lane, who just finished the academy, graduated from there, he's a part-time policeman now, and hoping at some point he can get a full-time position, so, we also recognize some employees that have put in like 38 years of service and 26 years of service, and that's, that's just to be very commended for them, their dedication to their job for that many years, so, we wanted to highlight them as well.
All right, Jeff, now, tell us when the next meetings will be.
Next meetings for June is June 15th and June the 29th, respectfully, that'll be the workshop and the, the meeting, we'll also tee up at that workshop, this ongoing discussion with R3 Development, Urban Residential District, and pretty much the, the development going on out on Highway 72 behind Bojangles and Burger King, so that'll come up for discussion, a little more discussion in the workshop before we pass that on first reading, or ask for it to be passed on first reading.
All right, thanks, Jeff, we'll check in with you again soon.
Thank you, Chip.